Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the December 6, 2022 City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee meeting to order. I am Councilmember Victoria Hunt, and I serve as committee chair for this committee. I am joined today by Council President Walsh and Councilmember Ray. And we will start, I will say, we have one agenda item this evening, which is ID 1273, Title 18 Land Use Code Consolidated Draft. And we will also have a public comment after that item, but before that, we will start with public comments. There will be multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation, and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, please press star three. And if you have joined by computer or smartphone, please look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. So I will take a moment, see if anybody virtually has either signed on and/or indicated a desire to speak. And I will also note for the record that there are no members of the public present in council chambers this evening. So, Clerk Grabowski, has anybody signed up or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Hunt, no one has signed up previously, and we have one citizen attendee at the moment, but I see no virtual hand raised to speak.
Okay, great. Thank you. If we do have comments later in the evening, I'll read some additional guidelines, but I will skip that part for now. So, we will get into our agenda then. The first item is approval of the minutes. We have minutes from November 1st. Do we have any corrections or changes or issues with that? Okay.
Move to approve.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. We have approved the minutes, and we will get into our first agenda item, which is ID 12, first and only agenda item, which is ID 1273, Title 18 Land Use Code Consolidated Draft, presented by Director Dollywall. Director Dollywall, please take it away.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the community. We also, I wanted to make sure we acknowledge we have few folks from staff in attendance today, and also Anne Marie Soto from Adorno Law Group for the committee members, if you have any legal questions for her. Christian Geis, our planning manager, and Stephen Pedu, our long-range planning manager, also online. And with that, I will share my screen. Can you all see my screen? Great. So today is a culmination of all six topic areas that you'd seen, and really preparing you for what's coming as a consolidated draft, and really seeking input from you all in terms of what do you want, you know, what do you envision the final review process of the Title 18 consolidated draft to look like? We also want to discuss the status of changes that you had requested, and PPC, fed by the community comments in the first round of public hearings, so we've included that in your agenda packet. We want to introduce some policy questions that Planning and Policy Commission will be discussing later this week, and then, you know, sharing some results of the code testing, and also in your agenda packet is the complete comprehensive public comment matrix, and, you know, giving you a status of what we did, what we heard throughout this update process, and what the status is of each of those items. So we're hoping to get direction from you on the process for reviewing the draft, like I said, and feedback on the policy questions, if there are additional policy questions you'd like us to bring forward, what kind of analysis you want us to bring with the consolidated draft. Just a quick little background, you all are very familiar with this, but, you know, we embarked on this journey of updating and overhaul of the whole Title 18, and we split it into three different phases. The first was the gaps analysis, where we met with various boards and commissions, in total 26 meetings. We had four council meetings. Phase two was the first round of public hearings for each of the six buckets. So, for that, we had 25 boards and commission meetings, 10 meetings with the council members, 12 additional public meetings, and we're here in phase three, where we have, where we plan on having three public hearings with the Planning and Policy Commission, and bringing forward their recommendation to the council committee, and then moving on to council, full council for adoption. And in your packet, real quick, is this list of changes that have been made, that we're working on releasing the final draft, but it goes through a consolidated list for all the topics, what we heard from PPC, from PD, from your committee, and the public comments, and the things that we incorporated or made changes in the final draft. So that's your attachment. Like I said, the whole complete public comment matrix, code testing summary, and then we've introduced the table of contents, which we hope to get to the final draft soon. In kind of mid-December, late December, public hearing feedback, three public hearings with PPC in January. Just real quick, in terms of what this list of changes, that's in your packet, we picked a sample of three, but we can go to any particular one that you'd like to discuss. So, the format here was, there's eight different topic areas in the consolidated draft. So we've put the, on the top, the Part III, which is the Division of Lands, is under the subdivision chapter. We brought forward all the discussion, and you all asked us to go back to PPC to consider Goal Six, increasing housing diversity. So we had that discussion with PPC, we gave them pros and cons, and they made a recommendation on the two topics, you know, maximum block length and zero lot line, and said, for central Highlands and Talus, not citywide, the block length, and on zero lot lines, they added the single-family zone that has a minimum density of 7.26 to those other three neighborhoods. So we've included that, and in the last column you'll see are the specific citations of the section of the code that those changes were made. Similarly, there was discussion in the Part IV, Development Standards section, on weather protection, and, you know, whether it should be along alleys and facades that don't have pedestrian access, so that was in our code. And, you know, there was robust discussion on it, and I think we heard it's important, but it should also make logical sense. And so, the question was, should we add width and be consistent with different sections? So what we did was, we looked at the different sections and made it consistent. So there was a consistency issue, there were a few things slightly different. And then where we landed on this was, if the alley provides more than service access, then weather protection is required, as long as it doesn't impede those services. And, you know, we've given you exactly those sections of the code that those changes were made. There was discussion about food trucks and 60-day limit, and the guidance we got from both PPC and you was not to have that limit. So we made an annual permit process, which is a Level 1 review, and we added some language, but simplified the permitting process. There was another ask from this committee to look at ecological score that Redmond uses. So we did look into it, and in your packet, we, in that matrix, we've kind of identified the 16 things that Redmond requires for getting a minimum ecological score. We determined that majority of these things, we already require them. And so, the other feedback I think we had heard was, we don't want to overcomplicate our code by creating, you know, a process that doesn't have a clear outcome to it. So that was the other factor that fed into, we have native tree requirements, we have tree retention requirements, we have evergreen, you know, diversity of tree species. A few things we probably don't call out as a requirement are, you know, green roofs, per se, or solar panels, and we encourage those, so that's up for this committee to discuss, you know, but our recommendation was to not create more process with, everyone will pick the same kind of options that they will like, and we won't get the intended outcome for what was, you know, what the city plans to get out of this. So real quickly, I'm going to walk you through the final policy questions that we've identified, and these came out of the first round. So there were a few things that were, do more research on outdoors spaces, do more, you know, finalize the deviation criteria. There was an ask for having sliding scale for steep slope offers. Through the testing process, we heard, and, you know, that critical code, critical areas code for homeowners needed some adjustments. So, so these policy questions were fed by the first round, and things that we've either further looked into or made edits into. So we've kind of highlighted these just so it's clear for the committee and the community members of the, things that you can weigh in on from a policy perspective. So the first one, site-specific rezones. So, you know, these are quasi-judicial matters, when the individual property owner is asking for a rezone, they're subject to appearance of fairness, they're subject to one open record hearing, but there are some options for you all to consider. Our recommendation is that the hearing examiner makes a recommendation to the city council after holding an open record hearing. This will give the council a clear record and a full analysis in a more legal framework, and then the council will make the final decision on the application. The con of this is, you will still not be able to talk to the community members, and you won't hold your public hearing. So it does put you in a position where you're barred from talking to the community members, yet you're making the final decision. The second option, which is similar to what we have now, is Planning Commission makes a recommendation, they hold the open record hearing, you make the final decision, but there's no open record hearing. So it won't be, anyone can submit comments and, you know, as it moves forward to you. The record is going to get closed after the first open record hearing. The challenges with quasi-judicial matter and appearance of fairness, you know, members of the community that live in the community may have to recuse themselves, they may, you know, planning commissioners may have to not be able to participate, and, you know, there are other, and WCI recommends volunteer boards and commissions from not making these quasi-judicial decisions. Having said that, Planning Commission also wears a hat of a legislative recommendation to you all, so there's that confusion between, are they acting in a quasi-judicial matter or in a legislative matter? So it can be confusing. Option three is that you hold the open record hearing, and everything comes to you, and then you make the final decision. Is there a question? Okay.
Yeah, so I have a process question, and then a substance question. The process question is, are you going to want this committee to weigh in on these questions, or are these questions that you're sort of raising for awareness that are then going to go to planning policy, and you would like us to just sort of opine if we want to have the question, you know, some different aspects of the question?
The latter, but just so that, you know, we have this opportunity for you, I'm just walking you through as you read the consolidated draft, we bring forward PPC's recommendation, then you can make the final call on the topic.
Okay, so my question on this one was, it's, am I correct that all three of these, the city council is quasi-judicial decision-maker? So it's really just the differences in who and how a recommendation gets made?
Correct. But in the third option, you have an open record public hearing, where community members will come and speak to you in a public hearing format. The other ones, you will not, they will not directly talk to you in a public hearing format. The record will be built in the previous, whoever makes your recommendation to you.
Okay, thanks. Question?
Yeah, thanks. So I'm just kind of curious on the rationale for the administration's recommending Option 1, were there factors that led you there?
Yeah, so, you know, because these can, these are, you know, sometimes very contentious from one party or the other, either the proponent or the opponent, the hearing examiner builds a more legal record for you, whether it complies with the criteria or not, and it's a more open, you know, conversation that the community members would have. Anne Marie is online, and do you want to try and give why, it was also the city attorney's recommendation of Option 1?
Yeah, so a lot of cities are shifting away from using their planning commissions for quasi-judicial matters, and moving more towards having their hearing examiner handle those types of matters. The reason, one of the reasons for doing that is that hearing examiners are typically trained in the law, and they are often more removed from the community than people who might be on the planning commission. So it allows the city to have a more defensible record for any potential challenges to the rezone. It also keeps the planning commissioners more in that legislative role and less in that quasi-judicial role. And so this is something that we see with a lot of cities. This is a big shift that we've noticed over the last several years, trying to have more of those types of decisions being either made by or recommended by a hearing examiner.
Great, thank you.
So then, is the rezone criteria. So we have made some edits that we included in your memo, just clean-up kind of things that came up during previous iterations. And the clarity is the increased density just in the regional growth center, can it be outside? What does this development agreement mean like? And really taking a look at that. But we wanted to flag it for your attention to see if there's, you know, if there's other policy kind of edits that needed to be made to the nine criteria. You asked earlier, Council President Walsh, about the peer cities, so we did look at our, you know, Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, and they have similar kind of decisions, but it really does vary on each city. So there isn't a, clear, this is where you do have the flexibility to say whether, you know, you'll approve a rezone or not. The idea for these site-specific rezones really is, isn't to bypass the longer planning vision that the city has done through the comprehensive planning process, but more for, if things change over time, you know, you do it every eight years, but there's a new light rail station that has gone in, and suddenly that wasn't factored in, and you haven't done a comprehensive planning on it, allowing folks to apply for this site-specific. Or, the city purchased a land right next to it, and it's a park, and, you know, the idea that it's a single-family zone maybe doesn't really apply anymore. So, changed circumstances is already covered under one of the conditions, but this is up for policy discussion for, if you think some things need to come out, new things need to be put in, but this will help guide any future site-specific rezones.
I have a question on this one, which is, the change, or it seems to me that the relevant change here is on the countywide housing targets not met, so I wondered on that one, what the rationale for that, as the new specification of the target was. And also, so that's for the whole county, right? That's a little bit different. Or is it our part of the county?
It's, I think this is just a summary of the things, but in your memo, we have the full language. It's a quasi-growth targets have not been met, yeah.
Okay, so it's just sort of clarifying the existing?
Yeah.
Okay, interested to hear what they think of that one. Thanks.
Any further discussion on this one?
Yes, I think we'll go through and do questions, and then we will go back through and give any, well, we'll do public comment, if there's any comment, and then we'll do, go back through and give any of our comments.
Yeah, for the deviations, so why this is put up here is a couple of reasons. One, throughout the first round, we heard, you know, administrative adjustment of standards were pretty vague and arbitrary. We couldn't give people an answer, yes or no, until they went through the process. It was usually towards the tail end, and everything was designed. So this was our attempt to, you know, provide some flexibility, but also some predictability for both the applicant and the staff to say yes or no. But really being clear about the criteria for deviations. So here's the consolidated list of, these are the only things you could ask for deviations under this new proposed draft. The previous draft had, you could ask for any deviation, anywhere in the code, except for density or height or floor area ratio. You know, there were three or four things you couldn't ask for, but everything else you could ask for some flexibility, with pretty broad criteria. So we've narrowed it down to this list, and each of these lists, then in your packet, in your memo, have included it in one place, so it's easy for you to read, then have to go, you know, find it in different sections of the code, that has each criteria for each of these nine items. So there's a broad criteria you have to, you know, meet in order to qualify, and then for each of these, you would have to meet that specific criteria. Yeah.
So, I'm trying to absorb this list and understand, I don't have a sense of what else could be on this list. So I think something, do you have a sense of, like, what the top asks for the administrative adjustment of standards would be for the last several years?
We did, we did take a look at it, and I think we have about 60 AASs. Christian is on the line, he just did this research today, and a lot of them were trees, Christian, do you remember the other high priority requests?
Yeah, they were, they ranged from trees and signs to retaining walls, step-back issues, and many times there were multiple requests associated with the same project. So, a project could have, you know, retaining wall setbacks and height allowances, along with vegetation reductions and setback allowances as well. So those are the primary, and typically what we'd see, or what it looks like we've seen over the years.
Okay. And then, would it be possible, so I always like to think of things in the lens of what makes, you know, housing more affordable to develop. Would it be at all possible to look at these deviations and the asks that people are doing, and kind of summarize them as either, hey, it just had to happen because it didn't fit with that lot, but it wasn't about reducing costs? Because there's some things that a developer is going to ask for, because it reduces cost, either so they can make more profit, or so that the housing can be sold at a lower level. But there are other things like signs, where it may just be about where the placement is. So I wonder if there's a way that we can look at this set of potential deviations, including the deviations that were, the administrative adjustment of standards that were requested previously, and get a sense, what's the end benefit of that? Is it just that, you know, they're able to adjust some of the orientation of it, or does it actually save on costs for the development? And then the other piece there, is it, is it possible to bring to PPC then the set of AASs that were requested previously, and which ones were granted by category, to kind of give a sense of which ones we previously deemed useful, and which ones we were more likely to say no to?
Yeah, we can share the data with PPC. I think at the end of the day, it's that balance between, you know, you go through this process, you have a robust public outreach, you establish your standards, and then you can't turn around and deviate anything. You have to accommodate as a due process for any property owner or an applicant, if there are topographical, you know, if there are real challenges with development, so that's a variance process. So that's a due process, everyone has, but it's a hardship standard there. These are more for flexibility and making the calls, and, you know, it's still public notice required for these, but it's not a public hearing and a hearing examiner making a decision. So there are scales of deviation. So these are the low-hanging, you know, things that we have to do. And the reason for some of these are varied. For instance, the window transparency issue came up as a public comment. Having multifamily right next to the sidewalk was a problem for some folks, and so we've built that into this flexibility. The others, like the preservation of view corridors, unless the city does a full view study, which is on the future updates list, we can't just deny an application because it's, you know, preventing. We can work with an applicant to design their buildings and do things like that, but you don't have, you can't build because you're, you know, so until, so these, that sort of informed this list of why some of these things came up here. Some of them were carryover, like adult entertainment use separation requirements, that that was through some legislative process that the city had done back in the day. So it's an assortment of reasons why these nine got here, but what I hear you asking is, it's hard for you all to say what else without having more information. And so we can share what the previous AASs were with PPC as we talk about this one.
Yeah. Based on that conversation, it occurs to me that it might be good to have an indication of where those different ones come from. You know, one was from a community member, one was from the city's previous legislative process, you said. I personally was wondering about the fill-and-cut exception for an elevator. Seems like that's an awfully specific request that got made at some point, so just where these come from might be some good context.
Yeah, we can, we can provide that. Outdoor amenity space, so this was one of the items in the first round of draft, you know, it showed 48 square feet as the open space. The comments we received were, you know, if there's a balcony requirement, that's separate from the outdoor, and then the terminology we used was confusing, so we've put the word outdoor and indoor to distinguish those two. But really, we went back and did some research in terms of peer cities, what makes sense. If you are going to separate, where did 48 come from? Was it six-by-eight, you know, balcony that, if you provided that, that was sort of met the standard? And this afternoon, Councilmember, you asked for some, what existing projects that the city had approved and what the square footage was, so that was emailed to you earlier. But we really looked at 48 square feet as one option, which is in the draft code, but really to address the public comments, and to align a little bit with what our other cities are saying and requiring for this, is to have it go up to 100 square feet and not count the balconies towards your outdoor amenity space. Or you have the option to go up to 200 square feet, I mean, Bottle and Kirkland have that standard. So I think in your memo, I've kind of laid out the pros and cons. 200 square feet for a 300 apartment complex, the, you know, could be 60,000 square feet, so close to more than an acre of open space. So there's, there's that. So trying to find the balance between having good amenity spaces, but not so much that they vary, so our recommendation is 100 square feet on that.
So is the question also whether we count balconies and private outdoor space? Is that also going to PPC as a question?
That came through public comments, and they were clear about PPC's recommendation was that there shouldn't be. So we've made that change.
Okay, so the clarification that balconies or private spaces are counted is with our current code, but the draft code does not include balconies or private open space?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic.
In the first round, it was 48 square feet when we had the public hearing, and now the consolidated draft is going to show 100 square feet, but you can discuss whether what number makes sense.
And then you had provided the information in email about some of the most recent developments, multifamily developments, and what the outdoor amenities multifamily developments and what the outdoor amenity space they provided. What, you provided, I guess, the amount of square footage above the requirement. Would it be possible to also provide just their total amount of square footage and maybe even related to the property size? So to get a sense of perspective, I'm just, it's always hard when I'm given a number of, you know, 2,000 square feet is like, okay, is that enough or not? So thanks.
Should we move on? Steep slope buffers. This was the other, you know, recommendation from PPC and based on public comments was to explore other options than have a standard 50-foot buffer, which then gets peer reviewed by our subject matter expert, a geotechnical engineer. And applicants can request a buffer reduction, but no more than, you know, you still have to meet the 10-foot buffer reduction and a 15-foot setback. So a total of 25 foot, but it can be reduced beyond that. So we looked at slope height was, you know, there was a request to see if we could have a variable width based on the height of the slope. Our subject, you know, our consultant, who's, who's done a lot of work within Issaquah is our peer reviewer for a lot of these things, also looked at slope geology with a variable buffer. And then we've also laid out a fourth option, which is to keep the same 50-foot, but the buffer reduction are limited to 50% of the slope height. So it's somewhat similar to option one, but slightly different. I want to kind of get into the weeds with this one because I think it'll help you as you understand what, what this really means and why we recommended option one. So the height of the slope is, you know, from the toe to the bottom. And then based on the second option, if your slope is, the height is, the difference between the top and the bottom is 20 feet, then from the top you have 10 feet and you have 14 feet, you know, from the toe. If your height is 100 feet, you have 50 feet and 70 feet. So it really can vary. But the problem with this approach is that it's only one variable. And we know geology in Issaquah is so complex and water and all those things that we are not recommending this option. This happens on a case-by-case analysis when they give us their geotech and we study their geotech. It's not like your wetland and stream buffers that can be, you know, one size fits all. It's so unique to the property. So then we said, okay, well, can you look at geology? And they did. And they looked at, you know, glacial till versus fill versus bedrock and came up with some justifiable standard that takes into account the height and the geology. But even then, we feel this is, has to be, you know, it doesn't, this would still need to be peer reviewed because the geotechnical engineer would need to verify that that's the geology that, and the correct one. It's not like someone could go to this table and just pick a number and that's their setback. So it doesn't take away the peer review. It sort of creates a more, you know, one size fits all or an average of all those things. There is still issues with this option. So therefore, I think we laid, are we still recommending option one, which is your standard buffer? It can be reduced based on the peer review, but not for all. I think there's a perception that these were handed out for all requests that came in. So we've beefed up the criteria for a buffer reduction. So it's not, you know, nobody could argue that they deserve this unless the, the engineers agree on that. But we've added the fourth option, if that's still a concern, that instead of reducing it down to 10 feet, that you would take the slope height into consideration while reducing the, the height. You know, land is expensive and, and development has to be tied to whether the, you, it's based on science. And so option one, where you do a case-by-case assessment and establish from a public safety standpoint. So the intent of these buffers isn't really to protect the forested hillsides. That's happening to the forested hillside chapter. This is more about safety and landslides and liquefaction and, you know, all of those things. And so therefore, our recommendation is still option one. The last question we've, yep.
I think we have a question.
Yep.
So in the email I had asked about what peer cities do and what the best available science. And what you had provided was five columns worth of information on minimum buffers, which was coal mines, steep slopes, erosion hazard, landslide hazards, and seismic hazards. But in this, you've only mentioned steep slope. Does that account for all of them or is it just that other cities have?
Yeah, good question. Those are separate sections in the critical areas code. So we, our current draft did not have a setback from coal mine hazards. That's already in the draft that we have to have 15 minutes, you know, 15 feet or whatever we say as a, as a buffer. This comment was really related to the steep slope issue, not those other critical areas. So among the geologically hazardous areas, there are five different types of geologically hazardous areas and this, these options are just only for steep slopes.
So, okay, trying to understand it. When you mentioned that this steep slope buffer is about safety, you also mentioned landslide, but there's another buffer in there and another buffer for erosion. So if, if there is a steep slope that could have a landslide and erosion, are there potentially three different buffers that they have to deal with?
Correct. But, you know, we, yeah. Those are three distinct things, but they usually come in together with a geotechnical report and they get reviewed together. So there could be an overlap between them. And, and so if there was a steep slope that also was a landslide potential, you know, highly likely that we won't grant them a buffer reduction, for, for instance. So they do play off of each other, but this comment was specifically to this requirement of 50-foot buffer from the top and the bottom of a steep slope. And, and the other thing I think to keep in mind is that on 40% or greater slope, you know, there's, you can't, you can't develop that under an existing code or the proposed draft. So.
Well, you can't develop on the slope, but you could develop at the base or the top.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And so at the base or the top, this steep slope buffer would come into effect.
Correct. Yeah. So you're talking about buffers at the top or the bottom, but if it's a 30% slope, you know, you still would have, but it's 40% that you can't do, you know.
You can't build on the slope.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
And the last question we've identified is really through the testing program that we had, we heard that there needed to be additional, that it was hard for homeowners to figure out when you had to provide a stream or buffer or a wetland study. It was expensive. It needed, they asked for a separate variance criteria for the homeowners. So we already have in our code and in our memo, I included those excerpts from the code. So it's, you know, you don't have to go looking for them. But when single-family homeowners do not have to provide a critical area study, because we do understand it's expensive. And if there is an existing impervious surface, they can enclose it. So, you know, if they have a patio, they could build over it because it's not an additional impact kind of thing. The, the option two, we've really laid out for the purposes of discussion in response to those public comments, that, you know, if the policy is, if the council or NPBC want to have a more liberal policy or more leniency for a single-family homeowners, then maybe there could be a threshold of 500 or 100 square feet that you would allow homeowners to expand as long as they did buffer enhancement. So you would still get a waiver from the critical area study, but you could plant native vegetation in your backyard and buffer and really enhance the, the environment. And, you know, we could add things like you can't remove any significant tree with this expansion because that would be an impact. I laid out some pros and cons, you know, without getting a monitoring report, it's going to be hard. Did the homeowners really plant and did they maintain it? It'll really depend. So there's the trust of what will happen as a net gain. So those are some options we've kind of synthesized. But again, the next steps will be PPC hearing in January. So that concludes the presentation and I can stop sharing.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Dolly Wall. Do we have any questions at this point? All right, I'll check in with Clerk Grabowski if there are members of the public on the line that might wish to provide public comments. And if so, I have some guidelines.
Chair Hunt, we have one member of the public online at the moment. Giving them a moment to see if they want to raise their hand. And yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So I will read these guidelines. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. This is not a question and answer session, but we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone. Please state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. And please limit comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, the meeting will need to proceed and you are encouraged to rejoin. City clerk, if you could please identify the speaker. Thank you very much.
Connie would like to address the, the committee. Connie Marsh. Connie, I'm making you a panelist. You should be able to unmute and also turn on your video.
Got it. Thank you. Connie Marsh up on Squawk. So I'm going to start with Minnie's last thing first. So what has happened over time in the city is the buffers have gotten wider and wider and wider on the critical areas. And what that has done is it has created a whole bunch of people who are legally non-conforming in the critical area buffers. And so this, this is, this has made them unable to do even very small things without an extraordinary amount of study in advance of doing them. And most of these people, they know they live by Issaquah Creek. They know, they know they're in these critical areas because they've lived with them for quite some time. So this legal non-conforming grouping is the group that we were, we were trying to figure out how they could make minor improvements to their house without it, just starting out by costing them $30,000 by having to do all the critical area studies. Right? And so our concern was not so much that they wouldn't do what they say they're going to do, because most of the people who live in these areas next to the critical areas, they try to be good stewards of their land, probably better than some others. So there was that. Now I'm going to pop to the steep slopes. In the past, our steep slope buffer code did not keep up with our steep slope buffer practice. And we added a bunch of different things like peer reviews and different studies that they had to do in order to get that buffer setback to 10 feet. But what this has done is this is creating a situation where you have a lot of development right next to these, these steep slopes, which are tentatively stable over time. They might be okay for the moment, but this, the, the new code does not make it better. All it does is codify what we have been doing for the last eight years. And I am one of the people who thinks that it needs to be more scalable. If you have a much larger steep slope, you shouldn't be able to get as close to the edge of it or as close to the bottom of it for safety over time with more rain. But if you have a smaller steep slope that is just above that 20-feet rise that you need, you might very well be able to get within the, to the 10-foot buffer because the safety and the stability of the slope is much easier to understand and less likely to slide. So I wanted to tell you that they actually aren't changing the reality of what we used to do. They're just changing the code to match the reality of what we ended up with for that steep slope buffer situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So now we will move into our comments. Looks like we are, we are being asked to provide general guidance. Did you want any specific feedback or should we sort of march through the different slides and give comments that way? How would you like, how would, what kind of feedback would be most useful for you?
Yeah, sure. I'll let Wally speak to it too. But I think for our purposes, as we go down this process, if, you know, what's the format? Do you want a paper copy? You know, it'll be good for us to know how to walk you through the consolidated draft, what information would be useful for. So that's a paramount question for us tonight.
Okay.
Wally, yep.
We talked internally about this evening in the presentation this evening. We felt it was really important to raise the issues that we've just walked through without looking for specific feedback other than just additional general information. We felt it was very important that you first hear from PPC before you had any deliberations. So I'm sorry if that wasn't crystal clear at the outset, but really as, as Minnie has mentioned, we're just looking really just for logistics. I think we see January, your January meeting, you, you get a pass on Title 18 and we're going to bring the contractor code of conduct back. So that'll be the item for January. We have at least two meetings currently on the calendar, February 3.
With the committee?
For the committee.
I think two.
So there's, there's two meetings. If your sense tonight is that sufficient, great. If your sense tonight is we need to start looking for a third, that would be good feedback as well. And then we have a committee of the whole scheduled with the council in March, which would be the committee's opportunity to start sharing that. So those are the sort of broad parameters that we're looking at. If we could get feedback on that. And again, any additional information that would be helpful to you, either in writing as soon as we can provide it, or as we work toward what would be a February committee meeting for deliberations.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Yeah, I just had a few thoughts about kind of process. I think from my perspective, there were kind of three sections of comments here, which is what do we want the final review process of the consolidated draft to look like? Is there any other commentary on the policy questions? Not our opinions, but like, we would like to make sure PPC is asked these questions, something like that. And then the third was code testing, because that wasn't in the presentation, but it was in our memo, talking through kind of some of that. So I don't know how you feel, but that was kind of the three sections that I kind of saw. And I don't know if it makes sense to kind of take it in those clumps or just go through all of them.
Why don't we, why don't we do them in grouping, groupings? I did want to ask, do you have any questions on code testing? Because we didn't receive any, we didn't receive a presentation. It was in our packet. I don't know that you're looking for feedback on that since it's completed, but I think that that part was more informational.
Yeah.
Unless it's part of the process, you know, you want to raise something.
Yeah. I had asked a few questions over email, including about what the information that we were presented had something like overall experience and overall code tester feedback, like who that came from and what other options we would have to kind of simplify the single family. So that, those questions are over to you, but I guess my question there is what does the administration think is the next steps for either code testing or synthesizing the information? Who is it getting presented to and who's making decisions about what, or recommendations about what needs to be done?
For the testing piece? Yeah. So the testing piece was added, you know, as another item to, to the, the whole outreach and, and really for folks to understand how to apply the code. You know, the application of the code makes more sense sometimes, but also to see, you know, will it work? Will it not work? What are some hindrances and how to improve the readability of the code? What are some hindrances, and how to improve the readability of the code and things like that? So I think in the memo, it lists a few things about what we are planning on changing. I mean, it led to one of the policy questions here about single-family homeowners, that came out of the testing. The other items were more about, once the code is adopted, how will we kind of, you know, have this information? So that's the implementation stage of the whole update, and there's some feedback there about, you know, graphic representation, more robust outreach, and so we'll work on that after the code is adopted. But beyond that, there were a few, you know, things like, whoa, this section is missing from the draft code that was released for testing. And so we've made sure, you know, some of those kind of things were addressed, inadvertent omissions and things like that that came out. Steven's also online. Steven, do you want to talk about testing? He led that with Valerie.
Yes, thank you, Minnie. Good evening, committee members. For code testing, we ultimately were trying to get a scale of usability of the draft code, and looking at if there were any difficulties with any of the regulations that were being applied for the different, for the varying projects that people were working with staff on, or even for the projects that staffed on. Were there any regulations that made it difficult for any project to actually move forward? It led to a lot of questions, but it didn't really point to any particular regulations that needed a stronger look at in terms of determining if we need to relook at any specific policies, with the exception of one that we're going to be posing as part of the policy discussions with the Planning Policy Commission. Minnie, did you want me to dive a little bit?
Did that answer your question?
I think that answers my question about what your approach is. I will have comments on that, but where do you want to start?
Let's start with, okay, so now we just have the process and general comments, right? Those are the two buckets that you're?
Process, the policy questions, and code testing.
Okay, right. Process, policy, okay. Yeah.
I have comments on each of those.
Okay, let's start with the comments on process. Would you like to go ahead?
Sure. Let me pull that up. Okay, so I think we did a good job starting this whole process with the goals and outcomes chart. And so that's really where I want to finish things up. I would like to be able to fill out that, or have you guys fill out the outcomes chart, you know, based on what changes were made. And I'm really looking for bullet points. So with things like the steep slope or the tree retention, you know, added a section, included these, you know, pieces, everything, I'm really looking to say, can we check the boxes off on those? And from my perspective, that's not just those specific items that were in the goals and outcomes, it's also the umbrella items. And unfortunately, from my perspective, when I'm trying to look at this, and when I'm looking at the code testing answers, it really feels like that's where we're going to have the biggest problem. So being able to look at that and say, it's easier to use, you know, there's transparency, you know, all of those things, stating, here's the things that we did to ensure those things would be really helpful in being able to really say, yes, we've done the thing that we said we wanted to do. And then from my perspective, the code testing should hopefully answer some of those questions that were in the umbrella goals around ease of use, predictability, and organization. I would like to see those both related to the specific areas of the code that were changed, but also just from a general sense of single-family, multifamily, commercial, you know, our various land uses and zones. Does the code testing say we're getting what we want? So code testing was about, are we getting the results that we want, which is the outcomes of the goals and outcomes chart, and is it meeting the umbrella goals? And so what I'd like to see when kind of trying to analyze, is this ready, is understanding? Is it meeting the needs that we aligned, and is it easy enough to use? And I saw in the code testing, a lot of stuff about the reviewers, but I didn't see a lot about staff or necessarily developers. I would love to go to the Rowley's or another regular developer in the city and, you know, think about, can you use this code? So that's part of what I'm looking for in order to being able to review the consolidated draft.
Yes, so are you asking, we do more testing? And do more reach out to folks? I mean, what we had trouble with, people raised their hand, then people said, we want to be testers, and you didn't select us. And then when it came down to actually spending six meetings with staff to sit through and picking your, and getting the property owner, it became labor-intensive for the testers. So we had people drop out because it was a time commitment for folks to do the testing. So it's not an easy lift for people when they're not really doing a development project to do this. But staff has done this throughout the process, right? I mean, we're looking at it from, what does this mean for this? And one of the things, I think after the testing was the feedback on, one of the projects selected was Bergsma property, and that was staff-led testing. And, you know, how would the forested hillsides and the road work? So we did some additional, go back and evaluate that, and came up with some information to that. The organization kind of questions, you know, suggestions that came out through the code testing, we did that. I mean, we moved sections around to kind of help with the flow of the movement of the things. So it'll be good to know what you think is missing. Is it just the feedback coming back to you, or go back and do more testing?
So I think the feedback was pretty clear that it was very difficult to navigate from a single-family standpoint. And I know the administration's recommendation was, we'll pull together some flow charts and things like that that are, sit outside of the code and help people through that. And I think that is also necessary, but I don't think that's an answer. So I don't feel like we've made the code easier to use from a single-family perspective. I have other things on the code testing. There wasn't anything that was multifamily. And that's the large majority of things that are going to get developed in the city over the last few years and over the next few years. We're going to have a lot of multifamily housing, because that's what developers want to build. So the fact that we didn't get to see the code testing on that, to me, is a problem.
That's where one of the developers who we were working with said, I don't have time for this anymore.
And I appreciate that, and I think at a certain point, recognizing that that isn't something that a community member or a developer needs to take on is fine. We needed some community input from people who are very involved and could point out some of these areas, but what I need in order to say this is working may have to come from staff. Because one of the perspectives that I have is, is this going to be easily understood by staff, that if four different staff members were to look over this, they would all come to the same conclusion?
Correct. And so, you know, yeah, I think golden outcomes chart will definitely help you kind of figure that out. The, other than the things that were in the golden outcomes chart, you know, we're not changing the policy on the form and intensity, the zoning, the height, and all those things were not part of this code update. So that's where I think the testing from a multifamily, you know, the standards were carried forward. We didn't say, you're only allowed.
Yeah, and that's fine, but we reorganized and rewrote and created no definitions. I want to make sure the code is navigable and easily understood by staff, and that we're going to come to the same conclusions.
We can create a slide that shows you the roadmap of, you know, and an application of it, so it's not just read the code, but it's like, when you get a multifamily project, here's where you go. Go to this chapter, go to that chapter to figure this out. So we can create sort of a flow of where the different standards apply. Will that be useful or helpful?
I think we're having difficulty understanding what success in your mind is. Do you want the planners to appear before the committee? I think we're trying to outline the processes that have been involved, but I'm not understanding what you're looking for.
I'm going to ask a hopefully helpful question. So right now, we haven't seen the version that will appear on the website, the online published version, that presumably will have links and, you know, different chapter headings that you can click on and go to that section and all of that stuff. So through this process, I have looked at a few other sites, you know, a few other cities' codes, and they have these links, and you can sort of easily jump to a definition, you can jump back to your section, things like that. I think part of the navigability issue, like when you're saying, we're going to have a separate flow chart, hopefully more of that is easier to navigate when it's in its final state, the way that people are going to use it. They don't have to go to, you know, separate flow chart document, but we haven't seen it like that. So I'm wondering, I guess the first question is, was the code testing able to be tested in that sort of a state, or not yet? And then will we be able to see it in that more like?
With hyperlink.
Final state? Because I think a lot of the expected navigation and the expected user experience is going to be based on that, the way it actually works through a browser, which is the way most people are going to look at the code.
Yes, so, you know, like up here at City's, I'm in Redmond, where they have the, we use the same company, Code Publishing, which is now purchased by someone else. So they check the references, they publish, you know, do all that cleanup before the ordinances are adopted. So as we continue to make changes, we haven't told them to go do that level of work. I mean, we could do that now, and then they would have to go do that again when it's a final published version. So we've struggled with, when is that right time to do that? And so for now, it's, you know, the policy questions, maybe in the, you know, we've landed on where the regulations need to be, the flow and things like that. So the electronic version of the consolidated draft will be able to, you'll be able to have a table of contents and link from that. But the next step of, if it's a defined term and you're reading that section, you click on that, it takes you to the definitions, that'll happen after Code Publishing looks at it. And so that is not slated to happen prior to all the changes are made, because otherwise they have to do it multiple times.
Yeah. So I think what, I think, hopefully, if I understand correctly, what we're sort of grappling with is, especially for some of these umbrella goals, which we've held from near the beginning of this process, they will be best assessed at the very end, I think, when it's actually in its final form. Things like, you know, reform regulations for more improved efficiency, equity, consistency, and predictability. I think, you know, we'll have to see this in practice as a whole, and then also make the code easier to understand and better organized for use by the public property owners and staff. I think it's hard. We had a group that, you know, did good work trying to test the code for us, but a very small group that was able and ultimately went through that process. So I think it's going to be hard to do that without. So maybe the question is like, how do we assess these? What's the process for assessing these? If the best time to assess them is after it's published, then maybe we could think about how we want to assess them after it's published for some of these umbrella goals. I think some of them, we can, some of them are much more policy-specific, right? For the text of forested hillsides, we can say, did we, did we set, you know, did we address these objectives? Did we address these issues that we have? And do we think we get the desired outcomes with the policy? So some of them are much more straightforward, but for those umbrella goals, I think that's kind of what we're grappling with, is that we're going to have to see how it works.
Yeah, I think staying at the policy discussion for now, and then we'll get it in a place where it needs to be with all the links and everything else will come later. Because that's fair amount, you all need to kind of, that's why we teased out these six policy questions for council, to stay at that level of, okay, are we going there? And then I think producing the golden outcomes chart, like Council President Walsh has requested, that'll help kind of close that loop of what has been done, barring these umbrella goals of, you know, ease to read and all that. I mean, I think the language has been clarified. So there are things we've done, you know, wishy-washy language and arbitrary criteria have been removed, you know? So some of those umbrella goals have happened from a substantive changes we've made, but some of those user interface type of things with hyperlinks and things like that will be the implementation phase of the code update.
Yeah, I mean, throughout the process, you pointed out where there have been disagreements between existing sections of code, you know, you've made it agree, or you've removed one redundant section, and a number of those things, I think, will ultimately lead to these outcomes of making it easier to understand. It's just that I think what we're struggling with is we don't have it in a state right now where we can really easily assess, like, how does the public perceive the difference? Because they have not.
I mean, homeowners will never find code, you know, easy to read. I mean, that's just, if that's our test, I mean, we can make it better and better and better, but there's not going to be, everyone's not going to fully get to, unless we really don't care about regulations, and it's only two pages of regulation. So I think, yeah.
Noted. So can I make a suggestion on how we might move forward?
Absolutely.
I think, what if we as a body make a recommendation about, a check-in about, you know, a memo as far as usability of the code after, what like perceived staff usability of the code, for example, that should be, I think, not, hopefully not a huge lift. And then perhaps, you know, we could see if there are members of the public that'd be willing to do a survey as well after they've tested, they've actually used the code and see, check in on these things a few months, I don't know, six months or so after the new code has been adopted. Does that make sense, and does that sound acceptable? Would that help address some of these issues? Council President Walsh?
Thanks. So I appreciate all the feedback. There are two areas for me that are potentially causing problems, which is in the umbrella goals. The first is reform regulations for more improved efficiency, equity, consistency, and predictability. I think we can evaluate that if, again, we were to have three or four staff members go through the code with a project in mind, or a few different things that they were supposed to test and come to a conclusion on, and figure out if they come to the same conclusion, if they have to go to multiple areas of the code in order to find it. That one is about consistency, and that's really about, is the staff going to consistently review it in the same way? So that would be my proposal there. The last bullet point on the goals and outcomes umbrella goals was, make the code easier to understand and better organized for use by the public property owners and staff. I hear you in saying that code is not inherently easy for a homeowner to understand. There are certain cities that have done this and done a great job of rewriting it, and I didn't get that in early enough to make this just super simple. But what we did see in the code testing comments, one of them says, "It seems most of the public's concerns regarding the code are oriented toward the smaller private residential homeowners being unable to interpret the code and determine submittal requirements, and trying to develop a budget to see if their project is even viable." And so what I would like from the administration is, first of all, how did you make the code easier to understand? I think it's just important for us to document that. And then, second of all, given the many comments in there, are there other things that we can do? Whether it's about navigation, or tables, or definitions, like, there's got to be something that can make. make the code easier to interpret for somebody who's going to read this. And I agree that the flow charts and all of that can help you figure out, where do I start? And all of those things, I think that's going to be necessary. But if I have a flow chart, I know where to start, and I look at the code and I go, I don't even know how to interpret this. I feel like there's got to be a better way to either pull it together with charts or tables or something like that, especially in that single family area.
Sure. Yep. Yeah. You know, right now, the code is five different documents. Each one is a unique unicorn that you have to go figure out why this happens. So by having it all in eight parts, that flow, I think, as you, as if you, if the comparison is between existing 20 different documents, and you go dig for a particular regulation to what you will see in the consolidated draft, that's a day and night difference. So I think as we put together what has been accomplished on the goals and outcomes chart, that'll help, I think, council, will highlight those things.
City Minister.
Amber Yusoto from Madrona, I mean, has been living and breathing to the very point that Councilmember, Council President Walsh is, is making. So I've asked Amber to chime in with some of her thoughts on this. Amber?
Yeah, so I hear everything that the committee members are saying. I hear everything that staff is saying. You know, at this point, the code is still in a draft form. And as we're reviewing it over at Madrona Law Group, one of the things that we're keeping in mind is how these particular provisions will be actually used, and is it confusing to the reader? And so we are pointing those things out, making changes to help the readability, so that when it is actually being used, and when it's even provided to the Planning Commission, hopefully that will provide some of the assistance that's really needed to be able to make sense of the code. As all of you know, this is a huge project, and there were so many different pieces to the city's land use through various policies, regulations, code provisions, different types of planning documents that are all being merged into one place. And so it's really difficult to make sure that you're putting it all together in a form that's going to be easy for people to read. But that is something that we're working on right now, and hoping that we can address some of those concerns that are being raised tonight with the next draft that will then be provided to Planning Commission within the next couple of weeks.
So Madam Chair, members of the committee, we're committed to having that draft due shortly. I think the 15th is the latest date. Is that correct?
Well, I think I heard Amber say for the next couple of weeks, so.
Okay. Well, before, before the 25th of December, I think, is, we're still shooting for that. Let you have it, let Planning Policy have it. You have a January meeting. We can certainly, I think, put on that agenda, sort of just a check-in point with that. And I think we can take back the comments from this evening, and perhaps maybe give an update in January about our work on those comments for the fuller discussion in February. But I know, again, as Amber has said, we're really in that point process right now. And the reason you don't have a draft tonight is the insistence of the mayor and myself to say, we want that draft to be the best draft possible. And with that is coming the careful eye that Amber and her colleagues are putting toward this. So I guess my request would be let us finish that work. You'll see the draft shortly. We can add to the agenda in January, just a quick check-in. And so when you begin your discussions in February, there's additional work we need to do during the month of January, we'll have that opportunity. Plus, at the same time, ask the exact same questions of Planning Policy and bring you their feedback, because I'm sure they are as concerned about usability as you all are, and they may very well have some comments on this, which you'll want to hear and will want to react to as the administration. Does that seem a reasonable course?
Councilwoman Ray?
Let me just jump in here, because I think this was a fascinating discussion, but it really drove back to is, if we use the, the goals and outcomes as sort of a touchstone, so ultimately, we want to be able to check that off. And if we're not there, then we can't check it off. So I think that, to answer your original question, like, what's the go-forward plan? I think we still have clearly some work to do. I mean, that, that was obvious. And then I think we have some more touches of it as a committee. And then I think there's a, at that point, we go forward with it and say to the committee of a, of the whole, here's where we're at, and, and here was what we set out to do, and here's what we changed, and here's the reference in code, and we think we've addressed this, you know. So it makes it very easy for somebody who hasn't been through all these meetings to, to assimilate this information very quickly. And if we think that we can't check the box that says, you know, the code is easier to understand, or, or we don't think it's, it, it may be easier, that's, it's a comparative, not an absolute. So it's not easy to understand, but it's easier to understand, and we can point to what we've done to, to get that way. And I think at some point, this is where the larger body also should be able, enabled to opine about, yeah, I think this, this is, this met our, met our outcomes and goals, or it didn't. So I just think from a, you know, kind of to answer the question I think was asked, from my perspective, I think we're on the right track. And I loved what the Council President said, is tie it all back to the, the goals and outcomes document, and, and show us, show, show, show me the money. Where, you know, where did we address each of these things, and how did we address it? And I think that will make it very consumable for the, our colleagues that haven't been living this for a year and a half.
Great. Okay. So we all agree on the goals and outcomes chart being the backbone of the process for these next steps, and our evaluation will be sort of the ultimate evaluation tool that we use, and that will propose our recommendation, that will base our recommendation on to council, using that as a, as a sort of guiding document. Council President Walsh?
I just want to make sure on the umbrella goals, my ask is to have staff see if the interpretation is all the same. Because that was one of the umbrella goals of saying, and one of the reasons we wanted to do code testing, I specifically asked not just for community feedback, but for staff's feedback on how usable it was. And I think that would get me to that point of being able to say, yes, it feels like we're achieving these, because I agree, the specific goals and outcomes, we're going to do a great job of being able to list out those things that we've done. And that's going to make it much easier for the rest of council to do that interpretation. But I still want to make sure that we're addressing these umbrella goals in some way, both to PBC and as it comes back.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, so just to confirm, then we would have, back to this committee, there would be a memo or, or information about the predictability umbrella goal, which is the, the third one down, was the one you're, yeah, the third one down, about, with the staff member assessment of predictability based on a couple of staff members, sort of looking at the same, trying to, trying to see if they get the same outcome using the same part of the code. Is that right? Okay. So, and that's, that's feasible from your standpoint?
Sure.
Great. Okay. I think, and then we've, we've heard already from Director Dolly Wall that she and staff are planning on providing us with the documentation about how it meets all, all of the goals, including the umbrella goals. So that will come back to us. And we can scratch my earlier suggestion about the sort of follow-up surveys, since I think we'll consider that later, but it didn't meet the Council President's objectives. Okay. So are we good with policy? I had a few other, or process, rather, I have a few, okay. I have one more thing, I think. So if anybody other than me could read my hand rating, I had goals and outcomes at the first thing, so I completely agree with that. I thought that was well said. I think the goals and outcomes, when it goes back to planning policy, would also be good. So then we have their assessment of those, so we can kind of all be on the same page as it goes through the whole process. Similarly, for those legal things, like today, we heard about the legal reasons why the recommendation on the quasi judicial process is the way it is. We heard that from city attorney, you know, I think that's really important, that we all have the same context going through the process for some of those policy discussions. So it's really important that we have, I think, the city attorney, or at the very least, that legal perspective on the issue, so that we're all on the same page as, as that decision is, is made jointly. So that's one comment there. Several other committees did make, did give feedback, did look at different parts of the code. Environmental Committee, for example, I know they're really interested in where their feedback went, what happened, you know. I, I don't expect that it needs to be, I'm, I'm just expecting that that loop be closed in a meaningful way for those committees that did put in their time and would like to see what happened to their work, and where did the code end up, and, you know, see that their work was valued and incorporated. So I would ask that they be sort of looped back in at an appropriate time.
Yeah, on that real quick, so we did circle back with the Economic Vitality Commission already to kind of give them the highlights. We are scheduled to go to Environmental Board mid-December, and then another touch with them in January. And we really want to take what feedback they gave us and give them that information, you know. One of the members helped create, update the tree list, so we want to share that work with them. The ICAP table that we shared with you all. So we're working on a touch point with them, but really closing the loop on substantive issues of what they raised. And in the urban forestry, you know, they raised that, and you funded that in the budget. So we'll, we're planning to do that with the Environmental Board. With the Park Board, you know, we've been trying to schedule stuff, but they weighed in on the community spaces and, and how we folded in the park and open space. With the Development Commission, we've already, you know, had multiple touches with them. So absolutely, to the extent we want to thank them for their time, and there was really good feedback from all of them. So, yep.
Okay, great. And the last thing was similar to my earlier comment about the legal opinions, legal context being the same for planning policy, you know, so that they could be on the same page as us when we make our recommendation. Similarly, I think it would be very helpful, especially with this last sort of, these last remaining questions, to have the context around why these questions are there. Some seem, some seem less tied to the goals and outcomes chart, in my opinion, than others, and some seem awfully situation-specific, and some seem pretty broad. So having that joint context as we do grapple with this last bucket of questions having to do with all different parts of the code, I think would be helpful. And I imagine there will be other questions that pop up too. So just, you know, why are these the questions? Who raised them? And, and why are they being addressed at this point, rather than earlier point, I think, would just be helpful as we move through the process.
Yeah.
That was it for me on process. And I think, we have anything else?
No.
Okay, then the last part is the policies themselves. If there's any additional things we thought Planning Policy should consider, or, or other issues with the policy questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, on the question to the site-specific rezones, are any additional changes needed to the approval criteria? I, I think that in itself is a pretty big question. And I think it's, it's a really useful one that came up, I think, because we were talking about the approval criteria as we went through the comp plan amendments. Just trying to understand why certain things were recommended that change from our existing choices, particularly around the, if located outside the regional growth center, the county-wide housing growth targets must not be met, seems to be rather tight of a concept. And so I just want to make sure that specifically is brought up to PBC so that we get that perspective. And from, the way I'm thinking about it, is that we talked to King County this, you know, last year, when we were talking about the housing targets, and we really asked for a lower number because we had previously met it and some of the other cities hadn't. So as, as I've gotten into this process, I've recognized that the housing targets are a little bit of a mushy, yeah. It, it's, it's very political. And so I, I'm not sure how that really, really, really truly should be used as a code criteria. So I just, I want to make sure that conversation.
Right. I mean, we're going to give you a 700-page document, so it was our attempt of the things that you and the PBC told us, go back and research more. There were more public comments that helped inform shaping of these questions. So we can get specific about where this came from, public comment, PBC comment, PDE comment. But yes, the, the criteria, you know, that was what legislatively the council decided in whatever year that that criteria was put into place. And so if you feel now it needs to come out, now would be the time to, to make that change.
Well, but what you're proposing here differs from our current code, and...
I think it clarifies some of the questions that came up, right? So what's our policy? Is it to get growth in the central Estiqua? And if so, how do growth targets apply or not apply? So Kristin Leeson, who worked on that code amendment back in that time when this criteria was put in, had that context of where that came from. And so, so, but we can, I, I hear you, what you're saying is you want more background on why that, why this is the recommended change, and so, yeah.
And you, and you don't want feedback on that right now. You want it to go through the planning policy.
Correct.
Right. So we don't want to provide feedback. We're just sort of raising a context piece that we think should be raised. And I wanted to clarify one thing, or ask you a question. So you said it's a, like a tight criteria? Do you mean like it's binary, like it's a yes or no versus these other ones that are like enhanced public safety, which kind of judgment call more? Okay. Yeah. So maybe just raise those as context pieces for consideration, since Council President serves on the relevant board and has, you know, some of that context that would be important for them to know. Okay. Okay. Do we have anything else?
I'm, I'm just excited to see what PBC comes back with.
They have a lot of work ahead of them. Yeah.
All right. Do we have any additional feedback, comments on any elements of this? Council President Walsh?
I guess I would just ask, when looking at the code testing, I felt like the multifamily was kind of a gap. And I, I understand why it happened, but I still wonder whether it would be useful to go through that process with staff, and whether the committee or PBC might find that useful or a gap, or whether we feel like the feedback that we got from code testing for the areas that were done was enough.
I, I think that, you know, test, testing is a process, right? And, and you test something, and then you learn from something, and then you make changes, and then you may or may not test again. So I, I think that, you know, what this is, is I think the testing's great, and I hope informed, informed you guys where you need to make, make changes, where does it fall apart. So, so I think doing the testing is great, and the fact that the testing may have not shown that everything was perfect, I think that's okay. I think sometimes testing that shows flaws is probably better testing. So if you can, you know, take the testing results and figure out, well, if we had done this different or that, you know, how to use the testing results to tweak the code to make it more usable.
Is this, is the concern about the content of the multifamily relevant code, or is it more about having the multifamily developers having that perspective? Because I was thinking, if it's about the, the code having not sort of gone through, or not seeing that, then maybe we could ask that to combine the two asks of the, the predictability, and ask it to be a review of that multifamily code for the staff.
Yeah.
And then I would check in if that makes sense.
Yeah. My thought process there is just, this is the major development that we're going to see. These are very visible developments to the community, and I know it's something staff is going to have to go through.
Sure. I mean, do you want to take like an existing multifamily complex that was approved under the old code and run it through the testing?
I mean, that would be fantastic. I mean, that would be fantastic. And really what I'm, what I care the most about is that staff isn't going to be banging their head because they all come to different conclusions.
We'll add one prototype for a multifamily that was already built in the city.
It'll just give staff the opportunity to say, yes, we're really, we're getting to know it. We know that we can get through it and get consistent results. So, thanks.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Are you set? All right. I'll just add that I will summarize this for, I will summarize this for the full council at our next regular meeting. I did flag that I would also raise it good of the order just in case there are comments. But I, I want to start also raising this for, at good of the order, in case there are comments, so that we can incorporate those into our process as soon as possible so there isn't a lot of issues at the very end. But if there's any feedback on that or ways I could do it differently, I'm also open to that. Council President Walsh?
I know we had kind of talked, I don't know whether it was in a meeting or not, but about bringing the other council members into the loop. And so has there been conversation with the administration on, we're going to set up some one-off meetings to kind of talk people through the process? Or is, is that something you're looking? I don't want to give feedback on it. I just want to know you're going to handle it.
I think first, we want the draft to be done. And the draft's not done yet. So we want the draft to be done. We want PPC to get started. I, I think as we look at the calendar, we want to, we'll, we'll do a touch base item in January in addition to the, the code of conduct. I think we don't want to go to the full council until we know that the plane's really landing. Our, our sense is, is that you'll spend the month of February on this and they'll start seeing it in March. So I think it would make sense for us in the month of February to reach out. You know, your colleagues are all over the place on their interests in how far they would like to go. I think the, the goals and outcomes will be sort of a key that they will use and the advice of the committee itself. But we will offer to them, I think, once, once PPC is concluded and you have it, sit down and do whatever they would like to do. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I, I think this committee can raise out the things that you want full council to weigh on because just giving them the code and all that, you know, like the golden outcomes chart, we can share that, but then maybe you can tease out the things you want the council to stay at that level and maybe debate.
Because it won't be perfect. I mean, there won't be, the document won't be final. You will say, "We like 95% of it, but here's the 5% of it, council, we want you to focus on. We'll do our best to get them up to speed on the other 95% in the meantime so that when it's that down to that last 5%, they feel comfortable. We'll connect whatever miscellaneous dots we need to in order for them to deal with those last pieces." I think that's how this all concludes.
Yeah. I mean, the, the other work product could be, you know, a summary, a bullet point summary of the eight parts. So part eight, part one, this is what happened, part two. So you don't have to go read the whole thing if you just want to stay at that level. I mean, we, that's something that may be useful for...
And it's for individuals. I think we could, it probably will take us less time to tailor for discussions than it would be to craft lots and lots of new documents for them. So we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out. They will be prepared and they will feel comfortable so when it comes to the committee of the whole, hopefully in March, everybody's ready.
Okay. You have what you need?
I do. Thank you.
Great. Any announcements? Okay. Then there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:04 PM. Thank you all.